It's 2:00 PM-ish on Thursday, September 28th, 2023. We've gathered for this work session to discuss the 2023 Fall Budget Monitoring Process for the City of Portland. Colleagues, as you're all well aware, the Fall Budget Monitoring Process, also known as the Fall Bump, is one of three major budgeting processes that the city undergoes each year. In a typical year, the Fall Bump focuses on technical funding adjustments with approximately 50% of the surplus going towards capital set aside to maintain the city infrastructure. This fall, we continue to face challenges related to homelessness, public safety, economic recovery, and livability, all while carrying out a massive overhaul to the structure of our local government. Given general inflation to existing costs, the sunsetting of federal one-time resources to fund ongoing needs, and the elevated level of deferred maintenance, the demand for resources continues to surpass availability within the city. As such, my Fall Bump guidance directed that Bureau requests be limited to incumbents' carryover requests, where bureaus request to use their prior years' underspending to fund purchase orders opened during fiscal year 2022-23, policy set-aside requests, either from the General Fund or the Citywide Obligations Reserve Fund, and technical adjustments and other true-up adjustments as needed. While bureaus did not submit new General Fund requests, they did request $18.7 million in incumbents' carryovers. This budget package opts once again to waive capital set aside and allocate available discretionary resource to charter transition implementation work. I look forward to the discussion today, and with that, I'll turn this over to Budget Director Tim Gru and Robert Chaney from the City Budget Office to overview the agenda and kick off the work session.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Afternoon.
Commissioners. For record, my name is Tim Gru, and I'm your City Budget Director. I'm here today with Robert, our Supplemental Budget Process Coordinator, to walk through the mayor's proposed bump filing. In our presentation today, we will provide a high-level summary of the supplemental budget process and changes. We will then walk through the incumbents' carryover requests, followed by non-General Fund notable changes. We will also highlight changes in position and authority regarding structural changes, such as transferring staff from one organization to another. And we will then close by reviewing where General Fund contingency stands based upon the proposed supplemental budget recommendations. As with other work sessions, this is intended to be a conversation, and we can pause at any time that you want to discuss anything, or you have questions or need clarifications. We also will have time at the end of our presentation to have a more robust discussion of any issues that you want to discuss. A note on timing. The Fall Bump takes place in the fall, as the mayor said, just as the city prepares for its annual budget development process. While there was some available one-time dollars discretionary resources that fell to balance, CBO has recommended allocating those resources to policy set-asides to address known current and forecasted budget issues. We'll provide more detail on those issues as we go through our presentation today. I'll now provide a short summary of the Fall Budget Monitoring Process. The Fall Bump is primarily meant, as the mayor said, to request incumbents' carryovers, make current budget adjustments, and true-up costs between fiscal years. This includes adjusting beginning fund balances based upon the comprehensive annual financial report, changes to inter-agency agreements, recognizing new external resources, and other technical issues. Historically, bureaus were permitted to request new one-time General Fund discretionary resources for issues that were urgent, unforeseen, or unable to be absorbed within the existing budget. However, this new request for one-time General Fund discretionary resources were not permitted, as the mayor said in his guidance. And as indicated by the mayor in his opening comment, the demand for resources continues to surpass expenditure requirements within the city. As a result, it is imperative that additional discretionary funds be allocated to address current and future financial issues. This will be discussed again further as we go through our recommendations. In all the funds, the mayor's proposed supplemental budget results in a net increase of citywide appropriations totaling $160.6 million. The most significant adjustments are related to trueing up beginning fund balances in a number of several large funds, changes to capital project budgets and their timelines, and other allocations that are necessary. It should be noted that the decision package updates, budget note updates, and annual performance data that normally would be coming to you during this session are going to be submitted later this year than they were in prior years. This is a change in procedure from prior years, and it's directed at providing more time to prepare, both for the bureaus and for CBO, and to review the information. This is also an indication to ensure that we don't overlap with somebody more important issues that are coming before you, including the Charter Transition Organizational Chart. These documents will be submitted to you by bureaus to the City Budget Office on February 6, and CBO will be analyzing that information and reporting back to you later in the month. As part of the guidance, the mayor allowed for incumbents' carryovers in which requesting bureaus overspent its prior-year budget and has purchase orders that are still open and will be received during the following fiscal year. This is probably the majority of our transfers from one year to the next. Bureaus were also permitted to submit technical adjustments, as I said previously, to recognize external revenue above adopted budget figures and make position changes as needed. The Fall Bump timeline was condensed again so bureaus could submit requests on...was condensed. Bureaus actually submitted their requests on August 30th, just 30 days ago. The Budget Office spent the past two weeks performing technical checks and conducting analysis, and for specific areas of service areas, we have our staff here to respond to questions as necessary. While we held briefings with each of you, the individual commissioners, on CBO recommendations last week, the written...this document, the written report was just distributed yesterday, and there's much more detail on our recommendations within this document. And we want to ensure you that if you have questions on this today or after this session, we will be available to you to respond to those questions and provide you with further information on the detailed information that's in here. At this point, I'll be pleased to respond to any questions or clarifications you would like to discuss. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Robert, who will go into a more detailed presentation of our report and recommendations.
Looks like you're good to go.
Great. Can we share the slide deck? Thank you. All right. Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. My name is Robert Chaney. I am the Supplemental Budget Process Coordinator for the City Budget Office, and we are going to dive into the details of the mayor's proposed budget. Before we do that, we're going to talk about some...a little bit of background, and I know there's probably some work session fatigue, so we will keep it mostly high-level, but we are definitely eager to get into the weeds on either our analysis or anything else if you have any questions. Getting started, we have the process updates with...which the mayor and Director Gru just walked through. In terms of timeline, as was noted, we have basically done this entire process in the month of September. The mayor filed his proposed Fall Bump just on Tuesday, and today is the hearing. It's our understanding that two commissioners will be absent at the hearing next week, so we are not going to have the emergency ordinance. It'll be the first reading of a non-emergency with the vote held on October 11th, a week later. So there is that to consider. We are going to start off with some context setting around the budget, the details. Currently, General Fund contingency, the adopted...how we started the year, we sat with $3 million in unrestricted contingency. That's typically how much we start the year with every year, just to give us a little bit of cushion to be able to absorb any potential costs, overruns, or anything like that. Then we have what we call salary adjustment contingency, which is also known as the compensation set-aside. That money is allocated as part of the spring supplemental budget. As you're all aware, bureaus can request their allocation to fund any personnel costs related to anything they can absorb related to COLA or payouts or anything like that. Policy reserves is where we store money that doesn't necessarily have a home or cannot be operationalized right away. We'll dive into what that's composed of. And then the last one is the major maintenance or replacement reserves. We started the year with zero. That is also known as the capital set-aside, and we'll dive into kind of how money gets into there and what the status of it will be after the bump.
When do we get to that conversation? Is that later in the presentation, the capital set-aside?
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be in one of these next slides, actually. Of the 12.7 that you see in policy set-aside, we have...that is composed of this. We have General Fund overhead true-up, which is $3 million that we start the year with. That's really kind of complicated technical allocations. In addition to the General Fund overhead pull-forward reserve, we rebalance and reconfigure the overhead model every three years, so we retain the underspending to be able to true it up without impacting bureaus or having to initiate program cuts. We started the year with $1.7 million in policy set-aside for charter reform transition costs. And then the last three are all...you'll notice the word CAL next to it. CAL stands for Current Appropriation Level. It effectively means an ongoing General Fund appropriation. These were there last year. They were allocated as part of the spring bump, but those are what we started the year with this year, and if there's need to allocate them and operationalize them, the council reserves the right to transfer them in. If the council determines that they don't need to, that all of this resource is discretionary and can be allocated to other things. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you tell us more about what that Beacon sobering service is, the $1.9 million is for?
Sure, yeah. So that was the old Hooper Detox Center. It was shut down, is my understanding, but the funding for it was not removed. It was just moved from, I believe, the Police Bureau. We just basically put its...the resource to fund that was just moved to policy set-aside. So it's $1.9 million this year. That number will be reallocated...a similar number, adjusted for inflation, will be allocated next year as well. The council decided to continue to fund that, but absent a place for it to go out the door. It just lives in policy set-aside. I believe we allocated a part of it last year, and there is a package in the mayor's proposal that we'll discuss more. But yeah, that effectively covers it. Unless you want more details, we could reach out.
Tim?
I'd just clarify a little bit. My understanding is when the previous facility stopped its productions, the council reserved these dollars in the event that another system needed to be reopened, and we will talk about that a little bit more in the presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not sure if the Budget Office is the right policy folks to talk about the Beacon set-aside. It's my understanding that we were going to partner with the county on this. I get the impression the county might be heading in a different direction in terms of sobering services, so I'd appreciate some clarity on what our vision here is. Although I also want to make it clear, I very much support and believe that...support creating a sobering center and believe that the city desperately needs one.
We will move on to the next slide. So this is just more context setting. CBO takes a pretty strict scrutiny to packages. That doesn't say that a lot of these decision packages that are submitted by bureaus don't have a nuance. There's plenty of nuance, and we do discuss those and ventilate those issues in our analysis and in our briefings. But generally speaking, whether or not a package meets a certain criteria is usually kind of a pass/fail assessment, so that is just how we approach our recommendations, which we can chat more about. This next slide is probably the most significant slide in terms of kind of where we're at, both in terms of the General Fund and the city and in terms of what the mayor has proposed in his budget. So we see we...accounting did some auditing, and they determined that the Fund 100, also known as the General Fund's ending fund balance, was $137 million. We forecast conservatively and found we originally just budgeted $95.4 million...$0.5 million in the adopted budget, knowing that we always true up the General Fund as part of the Fall Bump. So the difference between what we forecasted in $95 million, what the actuals were, was $42.2 million. Of that leftover resource, $17.1 is being reallocated to bureaus in their budgets to fund incumbents' carryovers, so purchase orders that they opened last year for which they need to pay this year. Another policy off-the-top allocation would be taking some of the short-term rental revenue that comes into the General Fund and reallocating it to the Housing Investment Fund per city policy, and that total was $2.7 million. And then the next big number is the CBO policy set-aside recommendations, which were also adopted or proposed by the mayor in his Fall Bump. Those totaled $21.6 million. We'll dive...there's another slide that dives into what that's composed of, and then the rest were packages that were effectively technical adjustments but needed to be reallocated to bureaus to be able to go out the door. So things like union-mandated training sub-funds, as well as Commissioner, an allocation from policy set-aside to the Beacon Program and Special Appropriations, and then some resource for the Columbia levy that...that one is...deals with a federal payment that basically didn't get processed at the end of last year. So as you'll see, all of the...in the mayor's proposed Fall Bump, all of the leftover resource was effectively allocated. There is no remaining balance as proposed, so there's nothing to split into capital set-aside or add to unrestricted. That doesn't mean that there's no discretionary resource. It just means that it's all been allocated to either policy set-asides or into Bureau programs. Are there any questions about this slide? There's a lot...
Yeah. Again, I'm not sure if I understand the $561,000 for Beacon, so can you explain to me slowly what's happening in that space?
Yeah, so we saw the $1.9 million in policy set-aside. Effectively, what's happening is we're removing that...removing $561,000 from that $1.9 million, reducing policy set-aside, and adding it...the way that policy set-aside works is it's not in a bureau, it's in what we call Funds Management, so it can't really be operationalized or accounted for, or like to go out the door. So we're reducing the policy set-aside on Funds Management. We're increasing, I believe it's Special Appropriations Budget, so they can submit outgoing resource to...in this case, we'll talk a little bit more about it, but it's going to, I believe, Central City Concerns Heart Program. And so the policy set-aside is being drawn down, moved to a bureau, in this case, Special Appropriations, which is another kind of bureau that's not a bureau, but it will at least allow that resource to go out the door. And I would...if...in terms of details as to what that's purchasing, I would either invite someone who is familiar with that program, or we can do like a Q&amp;A and send you some information in written form on the record.
Okay. Maybe I'll...well, certainly I'll request a briefing from the relevant staff. I don't know if today is the day to do this, but maybe I can work with the mayor's office to figure out the right people to talk to about what's happening with this sobering space.
Sure. That sounds good.
Could we have you go full screen on that presentation, please?
Sorry?
Could we have you go full screen on that presentation?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm not sure why the image disappeared. There it is. Yeah, that's what happened earlier, and that's why I...yeah, I don't know why. I have nothing else open, so here we are. We're going to walk through what was submitted and what it's included in the mayor's Fall Bump now. In terms of incumbents' carryovers, bureaus requested $18.6 million in one-time General Fund discretionary resource from their prior-year underspending, two fund purchase orders made in the last year. Of this amount, $17.1 million was recommended by CBO, and that is the same total that is in the mayor's proposed budget. It was a total reduction of $1.5 million, and the CBO recommended and the mayor included in his proposed allocating that...setting that aside to...policy set-aside to reserve for any charter transition costs. On the table, which I realize is really hard to read on the screen, you can see what was requested versus what was included and proposed. The commissioner incumbents' carryovers were not recommended and not included. Additionally, there was $1 million reduced from the Special Appropriations...it's called the Special Appropriations General Fund Re-Budget Package at the bottom. That package was for...it exists...it's Special Appropriations. There is an ongoing CAL, Current Appropriational Level, General Fund discretionary budget for the Black United Fund in Special Appropriations. It was originally funded one time, I believe in 2020, and then was converted to ongoing in FY 2021-22. They do have another million dollars in their budget this year for this program. They did not get any of that resource out the door last year, so it wasn't an incumbents' carryover, per se, so we recommend it against it. This is one of those programs where if there's council appetite and/or a council champion, we can absolutely restore that funding. Otherwise, we are basically standing on the principle that there's an ongoing allocation for it, and that program is fully funded in the current year. It's unclear if what they would do with the underspending from last year. It's our understanding that it would go towards outside grants, but in terms of is the program operating the way it was originally designed, it does not appear that way, so we recommend it against it. And are there any questions? And are there any questions about this slide? All righty. We'll move on to the policy set aside slide. This should be called the policy set aside requests. There were four requests for policy set aside for general fund discretionary resource, and I'll just walk through them quickly. The Office of Management and Finance, the Community Safety Division, is currently spearheading the Police Accountability Commission, which exists to help stand up the police oversight board. They requested approximately $300,000 for cost overruns that they experienced as part of operating the Police Accountability Commission. CBO's analysis on this is pretty involved. Effectively, it's recommending against it on the principle that the police oversight board, as was referred by the voters and adopted by the council, requires a pretty significant budget, 5% of the police bureau's budget, which if we're looking at adopted figures is somewhere in the $250 million range, meaning that the police oversight board needs a budget of approximately $13 million. We currently have $4 million in ongoing resource set to fund the police oversight board. $2 million of that was taken as one-time resource in the current year to fund the body, body worn cameras program. There's about $2 million left over. That $2 million, should it fall to balance, will be available as one-time resource in the next year to bring the $4 million ongoing allocation plus the one-time to $6 million, which is still very insufficient to fund the police oversight board. So we just recommended that once the true costs of the police oversight board are solidified and once the funding and/or policies around the police oversight board are solidified and stood up as part of budget development, we think that OMF and the Community Safety Division should come back in the spring and request this money with more fully baked, not only costs, but fully baked understanding as to what the police oversight board requires. But in terms of drawing this down in the fall, this early in the fiscal year, when there's resource available, it didn't make sense to do that. Beyond that, there's another, it says encumbrance carryover, but it's actually a request for resource within the Attorney's Office's sub-fund and within the Citywide Obligations Reserve Fund, which is a separate fund that's not the general fund. They've requested $200,000 from resource that they did not transfer last year. They were able to absorb it in their existing budget. We will, once we dive into what the new policy set aside is composed of, we can talk a little bit more about what's involved with that. But basically, we did not want to draw down the legal priorities reserved this early in the fiscal year. But we also set aside some money for Attorney's Office costs in policy set aside. So we can, we'll discuss that more on the next slide. And then we have the policy set aside request of drawing down the Beacon resource, the Beacon ongoing resource in policy set aside. There's a $561,000 draw upon that to put into special appropriations to fund Central City Concerns' heart program. And we'll get back to you with more details on that. And then we have the Columbia Levy Policy Reserve Request. This, again, you saw on the other slide. It's just tied to federal payments that didn't get processed in the current year, so we recommended that. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Maybe a statement. So if I understand what's happening here, these policy set aside proposals basically come from the mayor's office? Is that how, or bureaus? How should I think about this?
Yeah, so I can help you with that. The Office of Management and Finance, CSC, they submitted that on August 30th. They submitted that package, as did the city attorney. And the Columbia Levy Policy Reserve was also submitted by special appropriations on the, with, on the deadline of August 30th, where bureaus submitted their budgets. The mayor's office included, on behalf of special appropriations, effectively, this draw upon policy set aside. And it, yeah, it came through special appropriations, but it's my understanding it was driven by the mayor's office and their conversations with Central City Concerns?
Just in this space, especially from the city attorney's office, I'd like to learn, if the city attorney's office feels like pushing back on your recommendations about denying the $200,000 carryover, I'd encourage them to kind of reach out, at least to my office. I don't know if my other colleagues are concerned about this. I don't exactly understand the stakes here, what work won't get done or whatnot. This piece I don't under, yeah, so I would be willing and open to being educated on this. And of course, I look forward to this council having a richer discussion about the future of sobering services in the city.
Great, yeah, and I appreciate your point about the city attorney's office. We have been in close discussions with them, and I think this next slide will kind of discuss why. A lot of these costs are allocated for pretty sensitive things that probably shouldn't be ventilated in this type of venue. So we can chat more about that, but I would just warn you that it's going to be pretty high level.
I had a quick question as well on the last slide. And maybe it's not for policy set aside. So what is the timing for fully taking the hit on PAC? So we've got 5% of the police budget. What is the, when do we need to start budgeting for that?
Yeah, the voter referral says that the police oversight board should be stood up for, I believe, fiscal year '24, '25. So that'll be a consideration as part of fiscal year '24, '25 budget development, in addition to charter change and everything else. The Police Accountability Commission, which is helping stand up, they're doing their work this year to help stand up the police oversight board. But in terms of like the police oversight board having been fully stood up and fully funded, that's going to have to be a question for the council as part of '24, '25 budget development. It is, it does represent, and it's in our analysis, it does represent a cost pressure and a legal priority and a legal mandate. So as of right now, that's why we recommend it against it, because there's already, it's already under-resourced. So to the extent that this cost could be absorbed, would just help chip away at that $13 million number, if that's the figure. But, yeah, that program won't be ready until the next fiscal year.
And then, just at a simple level, on the discussion with Commissioner Mappson Beacon, so we continue to essentially set aside dollars, but is there a balance growing for the Beacon project, or how does that flow from year to year?
Yeah, that's a great question. Basically, in the spring bump, once bureaus have requested, submitted requests for compensation set aside, and then this is year three of churning up the overhead model, a lot of that resource, I'll go back. So as part of the spring bump, whatever we don't need to chew up the overhead model, effectively, like I said, it's discretionary resource, it'll fall to balance. Same with the PFMLA and the accessibility set aside, to the extent that bureaus don't need that resource and we don't need to send it to bureaus to operationalize, it does effectively kind of preliminarily fall to balance. And then what often happens is it can be allocated in the current fiscal year for current year needs, or it could be just allocated as a one-time resource as part of the next fiscal year. So let's say, for example, it only takes $3 million to chew up the overhead model. I don't think that's going to be the case, but that would leave $5.6, $5.7 million in discretionary resource. That would be, the council could effectively allocate one time to anything. And the same goes for any of these other costs as well. So if we're drawing down Beacon from $1.9 by $500,000, that $1.4, $1.3 is, it can either, it's council discretion, basically.
Okay.
But it becomes, it would fall to balance as one time. And then on July 1st, assuming nothing changes, the Beacon's ongoing appropriation would show up again in policy set aside with inflationary factors incorporated.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think Sarah is able to remotely talk a little bit more about the Beacon situation, if that's okay?
Yeah, if people would like to hear, sure. Sarah, you're online.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm online. Sky, Brocker, and Apples online as well, who has the most experience with the Beacon. Is Sky your own? Yes. So the $1.9 policy set aside, and I apologize, it just popped on, so maybe this is already mentioned, but is through that police bureau budget that was previously for sobering, that closed in 2019, that Hooper sobering, kind of, for lack of a better term, drunk tank that we used to have for folks who needed to sober up. So now we are using those funds in order to fund different parts of that Beacon network, so that coordination network and funding Central City Concern, just a small portion in line with HealthShare and the county and others who have all come together because they got a SAMSA grant, and we've matched those funds on a community level for a behavioral health team that will be in Old Town specifically. So this is a pilot project to provide mobile medical behavioral health support on the ground, which really hasn't been done before. This is intensive behavioral health support, so more even than Portland Street Response kind of offers folks. These are folks with a lot of medical training, basically doctors and nurses who will be doing this work on the ground specifically around behavioral health. So Central City Concern is piloting this project with a lot of different, upgraded funding model from various members of this community and then also a SAMSA grant. And so that's this heart program, so it's part of the Beacon network. It is only one of the pieces of that network. I was at the county earlier today, and so they funded other pieces of that network. And then we will all, I'm sure, as well as our coordinated care organizations, fund other pieces of the Beacon network as well. So this is just one piece, and it's a collaborative effort between county, city, and the CCOs, the coordinated care organizations, as well as SAMSA, the national grant.
Mingus here. Thank you for that clarification. Here's what I'm trying to figure out. I think I've been here for about two and a half years during that time. And during all of that time, I believe the city and the county have been sitting at a table trying to set up a new sobering center for the city, very much supported those efforts. I think the concept there is what do you do if we get a 911 call about someone who is very high on the streets and they kind of need to go to someplace? It was my interpretation that the vision here was to sort of develop an updated sobering center, a place where you could kind of bring someone to literally just kind of sober up. I was kind of surprised, I think this might have been this week even. I saw an article in the paper, and I haven't even had a chance to talk to the mayor about it, really, or our colleagues over at the county, where it seems like the county wants to go in a different direction. So I kind of saw the county as her main partner for developing the sobering center. And now, I think, in the last couple of days, we've seen the county refine their thinking in this space, and it seems like they're going in a direction which is not, which is solving for a problem, which is different from the problem that I think this county or this city is trying to solve for. Am I, am I missing anything there, or is that kind of where we're at?
Yeah, no, I think actually the media did not report this well, kind of to my frustration. I had to take a lot of clarifying phone calls yesterday, I would say. So we, I spent Monday morning for five hours approving the RFPQ, the 19 providers that had submitted proposals for a request for provider qualifications for six categories. So part of, one of those categories is crisis and stabilization. So we can't really use sobering centers in the same way we did before. We need medically managed treatment. We need, we have P2P meth, we have fentanyl. We can't use the same tools that we've used before when we were just dealing with folks who were intoxicated with alcohol or kind of minor kind of drug intoxications. Now we have folks who take two to five days probably to actually stabilize. It's really not sobering, it's true stabilization. And then we need a step down from that. So I can give the long version of this, but I'll just do, highlight just quickly is those six categories, providers were approved in those various categories. There were many submissions for stabilization. I can't speak to exactly who did that because it's under confidentiality, but a lot of them were approved, and we're really excited now. The county can now contract with those folks for the next seven years, and they can, they can build stabilization centers and have those contracts for the next seven years. So under that RFPQ, we actually are moving forward on many of these pieces. And I think it's helpful to think of it really as that continuum because we're going to need this immediate, like, mobile crisis, behavioral health workers on the ground, like this pilot project from CCC. We also need stabilization centers. We also need step down. We also need more withdrawal management and detox. We need all of those pieces. And so this RFPQ process allowed the county to be able to contract with all those different 19 providers or whomever's approved at the final kind of decision-making process. And then that funding, as it comes in from the governor, from CCOs, the coordinated care organizations, hospitals, city, county, whoever is funding that, that money can flow to those different projects. I would say the county this morning just approved six point, they changed it a little bit on me, but I think six and a half million for that kind of stabilization center to fund whoever is proposing kind of the stabilization center. It's not fully designed because it will depend what the provider is willing to provide, like what services they're willing to provide. So some providers, for example, are totally okay with taking drop-offs from first responders. Some providers would be less inclined to do that. So that decision-making process of who we contract with and for which project under that stabilization category, I think is an excellent opportunity for the city and the county to come together to say, this is a priority. They know we have, and I have been expressing for years, the priority for the 24/7 drop-off center for first responders especially. They know that that's our priority. Hospitals have a different priority, they want the step-down bin. So everybody's kind of asking for all the different pieces of the puzzle. I think what we need to do is say, here's a provider who's willing to provide these services. This needs to be funded, this needs to be a priority. But that process is happening, and I think the media failed to capture that in the articles.
For the record.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, I definitely support stabilization. I think it's an important piece of the puzzle. But as, as you know, and as I think we all agree, our interest here is making sure we also have a 24-hour drop-off for our first responders, and that will continue to be our priority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that clarification, although I'm not sure if I fully understand where we're at, and I won't drag us all through educating me today. I think the problem that I hope that we can solve with this $1.9 million, or begin to solve with this $1.9 million is a situation that we know gets replicated. Or happens several times a day here in the city of Portland, where we get a 911 call, someone super high on the street, hurting themselves, kind of in danger. We send out a first responder to pick that person up, and we don't really have a place to take them other than the hospitals. I think the feedback we get from the hospitals is that that's not a business they want to be in. I thought we were in conversation with the county about trying to develop a system for addressing that problem, which is kind of our bread and butter in terms of what we do over at 911 and fire and police every day. And I kind of belabor the point today because I just hope that we can. I'm not sure where the county fits into this puzzle at this point, but I sure hope that we can direct these dollars towards solving that problem.
Commissioner, we're all in agreement with what you're saying. I think what I'm trying to get at here is, is this earmarked for a 24-hour drop-off center? Is that what you're getting at? I think that's what I'm trying to get at. Or is it for stabilization center, which I think is what they approved today? In other words, you're tired of seeing this number for Beacon, which seems like an old term, and we're trying to get the language that matches what all of us agree upon, which is what statements you were making, that you all know we're on the same page about that. So maybe it's just a language thing.
Well, I think there is a question of, I kind of thought the county, I'm not sure if the county is still a partner in trying to solve the problem that we're trying to solve. But I can get maybe the right place, having raised the question in public, maybe the next step for me is to get some briefings from staff.
I think Sky was trying to bring us up to date on what their process was like this morning.
I think Sky, I can't see that well, I think I see hands up.
I apologize, yeah. I, just to clarify, so the, I think language is super important. Actually, Commissioner Myron brought this up today. I think it's really helpful for folks to understand. A stabilization center is kind of the umbrella term. It could include a drop-off center. So that stabilization center could include 24/7 drop-off. It just depends on how that stabilization center is set up and what that provider's willing to do. If they're not willing to take first responder drop-offs, then it's not a drop-off center, but it's still a stabilization center. So stabilization is kind of the umbrella term, and then drop-off center could be part of that, and we could have that function at the stabilization center. But that's, that remains to be seen depending on who's setting it up, how it's designed, what the provider's willing to do. I just wanted to clarify.
Sky, if I, if I could maybe offer a suggestion here that would probably help all of us. Could we get some sense of a timeline? I don't mean right now, but can we get, what is the timeframe? What are the decision points that have to be made? Where are we in this process? Because as, from the city side, we have all felt that this conversation has dragged and dragged and dragged and dragged, and they need as urgent as my fellow commissioners have just stated. Can we get some sense of what the county's timeline is here?
Yeah, so I can provide, as much as I know, I'm not as, they're, you know, they're contracting folks could probably tell you a lot more, but this... But this week, those proposed, that proposal closed and the evaluations happened. So now the qualified providers are in their system. So they theoretically could contract immediately with any of those providers. What they will do probably is tell everybody, okay, you said you wanted to be a provider for these different categories. Now give us your proposal. And then they have to approve those proposals based on what funding they have and what will there is from different organizations. So city, county, CCOs, except the state, et cetera. And then they are probably going to have what looks like some maybe up to $50 million in unanticipated SHS revenue. Some of that could go to some of these proposals. So that's supposed to happen obviously later this fall. We're learning that number. But that's just an example of some funds that could go towards some of these proposals.
And I appreciate that. We're sort of putting you in the middle of this, but that's because we, we actually get responses from you. Could, could you maybe work with our collective offices and the county leadership on firming up the timeline and the process? Just because I, I think we need to bring this conversation to a conclusion sooner rather than later. And it, it feels like without an agreed upon timeline and specific waypoints, this process could go on and on and on. Based on what you're telling us about what has yet to be determined.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm mindful that my colleague's patient is withering, patience is withering. Mine is too, to be perfectly honest. I feel like we keep having. And again, this, this is not you. I just feel like collectively the we are having the same conversation over and over and over again. This is, I think, my probably 10th budget process where this issue has come up. But I thank you.
I'll get a, I'll get a.
Sky, don't you, you have some good news to announce, don't you, about what took place in the meeting this morning?
Yeah, we received, yeah, $16 million in funding for the next two temporary alternative shelter sites this morning from the county's SHS funds. So we're excited to implement those.
Good work, Sky.
I just have one last question.
Can I, Commissioner Gonzalez, if I may just jump in here, especially over the past couple of weeks I have been, I've posed some sharp questions to our partners over in the county, especially on houselessness stuff. But I do want to take this moment to express my appreciation to everyone at the county who voted to partner with us to get these, what I think of a safe rest campuses setup. That, that's a model of cooperation, which I very much appreciate. I know it wasn't easy and I want to applaud the mayor's diligence. And I, I know that was a real team effort as everything that happens in this building is. So thank you and thank you, Commissioner Gonzalez, for your letting me butt in there.
No problem. I, that is great news about the task sites. Would love them to be funding PSR as well. We'll save that discussion for another day. But I, I just, specific to what we're talking about today. So the HART program, is that have anything to do with a sobering station? And if it doesn't fit under that category, and it fits under a stabilization center, what exactly is it doing to stabilize? I just want to make sure I'm, why those dollars are falling under the Beacon heading.
Yeah, yeah, sorry for any confusion. So the HART program is a behavioral health pilot program for mobile medical. So it's in Old Town specifically and it's basically addressing those. So for example, a police officer or PSR calls 911 or wants a number for somebody who they really can't deal with. They are out of their mind, very high, having behavioral health issues. This team is specifically designed to provide that emergency medical support immediately. So this is kind of that first step of triage before any kind of other center, whether it's the emergency department, whether it's the legacy or Providence stabilization beds that are coming online or any future stabilization center. This is to provide that emergency triage that we really aren't able to provide in the field right now with that high level of care because the medical providers, you know, aren't going out into the street. So this is a pilot program. That's just one part of the system. It's that first kind of part. It's frankly just coming online faster than any of the other parts that we are frustrated are not online right now. And they had a SAMSA grant and the community organized in order to just match those funds.
Okay, I just, I'm not really understanding how this fits under Beacon's budget, but I get the idea for the program. It's certainly something we deal with every single day, this gap. We're trying to address it in part with chat and with PSR, as well as some creativity on how we respond to certain types of dual behavioral health and medical. I'm still, I'm not finding this a particularly intuitive connection for this particular line item in the budget, but it sounds like an interesting project nonetheless, so.
Yeah, I would just say like the, I think a lot of people miss behavioral health emergency coordination network is that whole continuum. So it's stabilizing folks and that takes a lot of different pieces. So this is kind of the first tip of the spear. And then ideally you have the stabilization beds that folks can go to. Then you have step down. You also have detox. And then you have residential housing for folks or SRTF, the residential secure treatment facilities. So it's all along that continuum under the Beacon Network.
Sky, I have just a quick question too about the contracting and the procurement for the stabilization. Do we have a role as a city in this election? And if so, what role?
Well, I've been told by the chair's office that they want to include me in those discussions, but we don't, we don't control who the county contracts with. So to your point, Commissioner, I think that is a point of discussion because we are the folks who would be probably mostly using a drop off center with our first responders more than anyone. So yes, I would say that is something that I'm very interested in is how we can be more of a part of that decision-making process. I know I will continue to be part of those discussions, but it is a county contracting decision and so one that we are not empowered to make.
Okay, well, I know that we'd all be very interested in making sure that, that we have an ability to weigh in. So if there's anything we can do, please let us know.
Thank you.
I just would offer that my history with this is a dotted line to the joint office until the beginning of this year is when we're trying to think out of the box and actually be current with the reality on our streets. It was hard to, first of all, it was hard to insert I myself to be a part of the decision-making process. But then I didn't see providers that were relevant to the actual emergency that we're dealing with. And so we don't have the provider network at the ready to do some of the grim work that we have to do right now. And so I think we're dancing around the challenge of having both law enforcement, public health be there for what can be one or two weeks of withdrawal with some, and we know from the streets that when people are going through the withdrawal and aren't getting the re-up of the fentanyl, that's when they do some of the most aggressive behaviors and cause the most damage to themselves and others. And so getting honest about that and having that type of drop off center that has that type of 24/7 security, I think is uncomfortable to talk about. And yet that's the reality of our streets right now. So what I'm hearing is that we as a council want to make sure our money is targeted to that reality. And if we can't get them to target it towards that reality, then we have to build it ourselves. I think that's where we're at.
And I, I thank you, Commissioner. I would also just like to state too, I think this morning in the county commission meeting, Andrew Menadall, the CEO and president of Central City Concern, said that from his personal medical perspective, when he was on site actually doing the services and, and working with guests and on the Clinton Triangle site, he thinks of these sites actually as the temporary alternative stabilization sites. So he was like, I actually think that's what they should be called because what you're providing is stabilization for folks who otherwise don't really have stabilization center to go to and they're getting that emergency medical treatment and then can go be connected to other services as well. So I think this council is already building those. And we are filling a gap that's desperately needed. We clearly need more. But I also think we need to think about how much we are already putting in the system and I think be really proud today of how much more we're going to put online to actually give medical services and emergency medical services to folks who really need that stabilization.
Thanks, Sky. That was really helpful. And we know that Central City Concern had to close them in 2019 because their employees didn't feel safe because we weren't adapting to the challenge of the current synthetic challenging drugs that are causing these psychotic behaviors.
I don't want to belabor this from a budget perspective, but I, I still feel like we're still not answering the core crisis that we're facing on our streets for first responders. That's just an editorial. That's fine to call a task site a stabilization center. It does stabilize someone in a broad sense, but when we're talking folks with high levels of meth or fentanyl in their body, there's literally no place to take them right now. That's the problem we're trying to solve for. And so none of what's been described, including this HART project, that sounds quite nice, seems to really be addressing that core gap in our system. So that's more editorial. It's less about this budget cycle at this point. I just not really getting it. Yeah, I think we are. I just, it's very focused at this point. So thank you.
I would just clarify to you, the, the 335,000 that we also sent to make sure the unity beds are stood up, those nine beds will be stabilization for this continuum, Commissioner. So I think those will be really helpful as a first step. Obviously we need more than nine beds, but it's a, it's a first step and that stabilization initiative be online later this fall.
I know we need to move on, but Sky or Commissioner Gonzalez or Mr. Mayor, does anyone know like how many of these referrals through our first responders do we have a day? You know, I'd like to really start to focus in on the prob, the problem that we're, at least on the city side that we need to address, which is having a place to take people who are at immediate crisis to kind of get them through the 48, 72 hours. I'd like to understand the scope of that problem and really begin to focus city dollars on solving for that.
So we have a report online from the consultants that we had hired to do a lot of this work. So it really scopes out that. And to your point, Commissioner, what they found was they think 50 beds across the system of stabilization in different, you know, whether it's one center or multiple, that's kind of the number they came up with. I've heard people balk at that number thinking it's too much, but I, they, they ran the numbers and that's, that's where they landed.
Do you have a sense of how much that would cost?
Uh, well, I was told, I was quoted a stabilization center of 20 beds would probably be 12 million ongoing every year. It's, it might be even more than that, to be honest, because that might have been more on the 10 to 15 range, but that's my recollection.
And do I understand that one of the reasons why the city just doesn't like stand it up ourselves is that the federal government through Medicaid or something could help us here? But the city doesn't, isn't qualified, doesn't qualify to receive those federal and state dollars? Is that what's the, the bottleneck or the dilemma in this space?
So it's, yeah, multifaceted. That's definitely one of them is to not get that 70 to 75% Medicaid reimbursement for those services. The other part is that the county does, manages the regulations and OJ manages the regulations for these centers. So the sobering center, we were kind of allowed to stand up because it didn't fall under too many different regulations. Medically managed treatment for P2P meth and fentanyl, whole different animal, falls under a ton of different regulations. And so we wouldn't be able to stand that up by ourselves without meeting all of the county's needs. So the county would have to be at the table in any kind of partnership for standing up a center, basically.
Okay, thank you.
Great. If we could have the slide deck back on. Yeah, no, I mean, we at the Budget Office always enjoy a policy conversation. And I do think that it does kind of underscore how valuable the fall bump is in. It's on the.
Could, could you just speak up a little bit?
Yeah, we can't hear you. How's that? Is this? Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, sure. Could, could we turn it up? Could we turn his mic up just a bit? See where we're sitting, there's a big fan or something, so it's hard to either hear it.
Testing. Hello?
That microphone right there. Yes, could we turn his microphone up just a bit?
Hello?
Just move it closer.
Hello, hello.
That's great.
All right. We'll do this. Yeah, but I think that does underscore how valuable the fall bump is in daylighting and deliberating budget development issues. But that was the, oh, and then the last item after the Beacon one, I can't remember if we actually discussed this, but was the levy ready request for one-time general fund resources, which you saw came off the top during balancing. So the next slide that is going to provide a lot of information for y'all is what the mayor's proposed adjustments due to policy set aside. So we see the original allocation that we started the budget with in the adopted budget. And all of the line items that have data in the middle columns, what we're going to walk through right now. The first one being charter reform transition costs, as we discussed. The ending fund balance for the general fund, instead of falling into unrestricted contingency, we allocated to charter reform transition costs. And then the big allocation that is decomposed on the other slide, on the next slide, and we'll, we'll discuss that for a bit, is the public safety set aside. Per a budget note adopted by this council, we are also replenishing the emergency fund managed by PVM to $1 million. And then we have the attorney's office current year costs tied to some costs that they know are coming this year. Those costs are medium confidence. So when they do come in, they'll request it in the spring bump and whatever they don't need will fall to balance. Hopefully, we have forecasted this conservatively and they don't end up needing more. But that will be relitigated, so to speak, in the spring supplemental budget, the levy draw which we saw. And then $25,000 for a project contingency for the water bureau. This council previously allocated $250,000 to restore mountain taper reservoirs. This allocation will allow the water bureau to have a project contingency to, they've already done analysis on the voids in Reservoir Six. Because it's no longer part of the water system, they can't use ratepayer dollars for it. This project is already mostly funded. And this allocation just sets aside enough money to take care of it across the finish line. And again, that is for a project contingency. There's a chance that they don't need it and that it falls to balance. The next slide, we're gonna.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, yeah.
What does the policy set aside that the mayor proposed by us again, the 18.5 million?
That's this next slide.
Okay, then the larger question I have is, I'm not quite sure where, so we have 21 and a half million dollars roughly in the mayor's proposed adjustments. Where does that money come from again? Like if I were to look, if I were to look at the previous slides, where would I find that 21 million?
That is going to be, I'll just go back because this is pretty, pretty in the weeds. You'll see the, like the policy set aside recommendations. It's part of the, slide number seven. So.
So that's the 21.588.
Yeah, so basically the $42 million, we had to revise our budget to match audited actuals. We balance revenue equals expenses. So we added the revenue and then to balance the expenses, we have the 21.5 there. And again, that, that resource lives in what we call funds management. It is effectively like a bureau, but not a bureau. So the resource that's getting set aside here will still require another council action to actually be operationalized and moved into bureaus to be spent. And that, because so many of these issues just require time to figure out what the actual need is, we figured we would set it aside now and have bureaus request upon it in the spring, once those costs are more solidified. Or as we've seen with prior year fall bumps, sometimes the need changes and/or disappears. So given how early it is in the fiscal year, we're just recommending that it go into effectively a lockbox. And then in the spring, when bureaus realize that yes, this issue is as real as we thought it was, they can request it again.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. And we, we just went through this slide. So now we're going to talk about a specific line item. So basically we're just drilling in further and further. The 18.5 million that you saw here is decomposed here, and this is probably the biggest issue that we found. Not that we discovered it was an issue last year. It's an issue this year. It'll be an issue next year. It's just public safety personnel budgets. So the 18.5 million dollars in terms of line items, you can see $1 million is going towards the Portland Police Bureau's double overtime initiative, which had a not to exceed amount of $1 million. They stated that they wouldn't be able to absorb it within existing resources. The next line item is $5.3 million. We, we discussed this a lot in our analysis, but the, as part of the mayor's proposed adopted budget, he allocated, he increased the police bureau's position authority for police officers by 43 positions, added $5.3 million in ongoing resource, but took it back on a one-time basis to balance, as part of balancing as proposed. The police bureaus, their recruitment efforts have been pretty successful. They fully anticipate that around January, February, they'll start filling these 43 vacancies. So we have recommended just adding back that one-time resource to cover the police bureau. Should they be able to fully fund and fully recruit those positions? positions. And then, the 1.7 is just based on current year overtime projections. It takes a lot of overtime to train new officers. So, that totals $8 million that we are recommending, again, be set aside in public, in policy set aside. And then, in the spring, we anticipate the Police Bureau will request their compensation set aside resources. And then, to the extent that personnel projections show that that might not be enough resource, they have this set aside to draw upon as well. Again, we think that there's a lot of analysis to do. And waiting till the spring, when those need, when those needs solidify, is going to be the most fiscally prudent way for this council to do, to kind of monitor the public safety budgets. The next, next line, two line items are for the Fire Bureau. 2.5 million is going in one-time resources, going to them per the collective bargaining agreement and how it was costed at the time. Beyond that, there is $8 million that we're setting aside for their overtime issues. And this is discussed a lot in the analysis. They are operating on a lot of overtime right now. They have a number of daily vacancies that require call shift overtime to meet their shift minimums. That is basically generating time and a half costs for a pretty significant core service. We have, last year, the Fire Bureau got their full compensation set aside, as well as $2 million in the over expenditure ordinance. On July 1st, there was a 5% COLA. So, those same costs as last year now have a little bit of a basement that's been raised. There is a lot to discuss here. It's a current year issue, absolutely, in the fall bump. It's definitely probably going to be an issue over the next two years. So, fully expect to ventilate this during budget development. There's a lot of things that could be done, and we're happy to discuss this. Our analysis is, is pretty thorough, I think, in that regard. But I, I'm just going to leave it open for questions at this point. And I know that, I think, I believe we have some Fire Bureau staff here, if I'm not mistaken. So...
Ryan and Kezia back there. Not, well, actually, let me ask a quick question. Just so I'm tracking on the fire side. So, in the spring bump, we set aside $2 million for fire overtime, is that right?
Is that last year?
Uh...
We added 13 authorized positions. That was budget neutral.
Okay.
So, there was no additional dollars. It was just authorization already there.
Okay. I think my big, well, where's your analysis? If we wanted to learn more, if a member of council wanted to educate themselves more about...
It's all, it's all in here.
All in...
Yeah. I apologize, getting this to you yesterday. Didn't give you much of an opportunity. That's why I said earlier, if you go through here and you have questions or concerns or anything, please call us and we'll, we'll come over and talk to you.
Okay. Thank you. And I confess, I, I didn't get a chance to do my homework here. And I'll, I'll make, I'll make the observation that just 8 million in, in overtime seems like a lot, especially if it's a structural problem. I look forward to diving into the Budget Office's analysis in terms of how we change things to kind of bring our resources and the needs of the community in the fire space up to, up to some sort of equilibrium. At the same time, I also want to be clear, especially in the public safety space, I understand our needs to, you know, grow our staff. And frankly, I think the fire is a great example of the expenses that you incur when you don't have enough bodies to do the work that you need to do. But this also kind of feels unsustainable, too. So, I think. So, with that, I'll say, I'll read your analyses and I'll talk to, I look forward to meeting with fire staff and Commissioner Gonzalez. I'm, I'm going to be a partner to help you figure this out. And I think what I want to make, what I want to say here is the statement that it really is kind of time to figure this out, I think.
And I, we have Chief Ryan and Kezia available. We'll note here, we did a deep dive of Citygate earlier this year on overtime, and they articulated a pretty clear path on addressing overtime in a material way. We just haven't caught up in authorizations. And, you know, I might quibble a little bit as the way we present the police history and fire history here. You know, we added 61 authorized positions last year for police. We authorized 13 fire. And so, and BoAC got ahead of its problems because we made a substantial investment proactively. And it's just, you know, we, we waited to get the analysis done. We feel like we have good outside analysis. I know CBO is engaged with fire on it. But we're going to have to take this lump at some point to, that's what you're speaking to, that's structural. Otherwise, this is just going to be every year thing. And we haven't really talked about the retirement cliff that we think we've mitigated pretty well, but it's still going to hit at some point. You're just delaying when the retirements are going to happen. So, you know, it, fire's been the last to sort of address this piece. So...
Well, Commissioner Gonzalez, I'll let us move on, but I want to thank Commissioner Gonzalez and fire leadership for digging into what I know is a challenging problem. And when you tell me that we have a path forward, I believe you, and I'll partner with you to get it done.
Hours are down a little bit this year. That's the, that's the one piece of good news. It's just the cost per hour continues to go up, as all of these contracts do. So, it's, we'll have to see how it plays out the rest of the fiscal year. But we're, we made some incremental improvements this year.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah. I just wanted to note that we, you know, this $10.5 million is a large number. This is not a conservative estimate based on projections. This could be not enough. So, lots to consider. It's, the cost pressures are highly variable, as we know. For example, eligible firefighters, firefighters eligible to retire versus who actually retires. And the same goes for the Portland Police Bureau. Those payouts could have a significant impact. It's not likely that everyone who's eligible will retire. But I think the real, the real difficulty is that you typically see a coalescing of retirements around 27 pay period lookbacks. And one of those this year is in June, which is after all of our budget processes. And so, to the extent that there is not enough resource available to do those payouts, it represents significant risk to the general fund.
Just to clarify, we're monitoring the forecasts for both police and fire very closely. We had a very good meeting with the, with the fire chief yesterday, and we'll continue to be working with them on the situation going forward.
Beyond that, in the fall bump, there are some position changes. None of these, I should, note off the top, none of these are funded with new general fund discretionary revenue. So, we have in the Bureau of Environmental Services, they are adding two full-time positions. In Civic Life, they are reducing two positions. In the Office of Management and Finance, you'll notice that this balances with the Portland Fire and Rescue. Portland Fire and Rescue is sending six positions to the Community Safety Division. The Children's Levy is increasing their FTE. They are funded by their own levy. Portland Fire and Rescue also realigned some of their own internal resources to add a financial analyst. The Portland Parks and Recreation Bureau is actually receiving, they've set up an interagency agreement with the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability and are funding 12 positions with the Portland Clean Energy Fund resources to work on the Equid Rolla Tree Canopy Program. And they're adding a 13th position, just funded with the Tree Preservation Fund, which is a sub-fund, I believe, in one of their trust funds. And then, the City Arts Program is adding three new positions. We can invite some folks up to talk about the details of these, if you guys are interested.
And this is non-general fund, right?
Hearing nothing.
I have a quick question, just on, uh... Well, maybe it makes sense. Or, I noticed we have a reduction in the disability program over at Civic Life.
Yeah, let me, or did you want to talk to that, Anthony?
So, your name is Roger.
Hi, my name is Anthony, and I'm the CBO analyst for Civic Life. So, in last year's budget process, three programs moved from Civic Life to BDS. So, the cannabis program, the noise program, the liquor licensing program. And all of the revenues for those programs also moved over to BDS. And so, there were positions that were supported in, by those funds in Civic Life. And so, they had a structural deficit. And so, during the fall bump, Civic Life realigned, one of their packages, realigned part of the resources needed to ensure that all of their personnel resources, their current personnel are fully funded.
So, what did that disability person do? Or maybe here, instead of dragging you through this...
Do you work there? Do you have some thoughts on that?
My broad thoughts in this space is, and I hope we can address this in our future budget. Given the number of Portlanders who face some disability and given the number of people we, we have in the city, I think there's an imbalance between the proportion of Portlanders who are disabled and the investments we make in disability. And I think this is a space that actually kind of deserves some more thought. I don't know if it deserves, well, I'm sure it deserves more resources. I feel like we have not been nearly systematic in this space, except for maybe ADA ramps or something. But I do wonder and am concerned that we are kind of systematically not serving the disability community in a way that we probably should. So, that's a conversation that I hope that we can have, and a challenge that I hope we can dig into as we approach our next budget. And maybe just a work, as part of a work session or something, even just an overview of what our current disability staffing approach is across all bureaus. As we engage in charter reform and reorganizing the bureaus, this might be a place where efficiency could really, we can grab some efficiencies or something. But one of the things that does keep me up at, at night is I, I, I wonder if we consistently under-invest in this space.
I can get back to you. I'll talk to the people at Civic Life. But also, you know, I hear you a lot, make really good points about being disciplined.
Yep.
And so, we know that the county provides such services for the marketplace when it comes to disability.
Sure. Absolutely. And I, I didn't mean to pick on Civic Life, and I know there's been a lot of transition here, and I'm deeply aware of it.
Yeah, we're just trying to true it up to its original mission, as you know.
Yeah. Absolutely. So, this is not a critique of the bureau. However, I, I think historically, disability has had a home in Civic Life, as Civic Life kind of reinvents itself. I think part of the work that we as policy makers...
Civic Life became a miscellaneous file as well, as you know.
Oh, I, absolutely, no. On, on the other hand, disability is kind of inevitable if you're a human being. So, I think it's something that we should be mindfully planning for.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner. Are there any other questions on the position changes? Hearing none, I believe. We just have one more slide. So, CBO manages the Cannabis Fund, the Recreational Cannabis Fund, not the Cannabis Licensing Fund, which is managed by the Bureau of Development Services. We manage the Cannabis, the Recreational Cannabis Tax Fund. We do the forecasting and all that. We forecasted a beginning fund balance of 8.9 million, but the audited actuals showed an ending fund balance of 7.2 million. So, unlike the general fund, when we added 42 million, we actually had to reduce the amount of resource available in the Cannabis Fund. Unfortunately, we only had about 1.5 million in fund contingency in there. So, what we're recommending is a short-term cut in the Prosper Portland Cannabis Fund budget. That would be restored once the cannabis revenue comes back next year. So, it'd be a short-term cut. It's effectively cash flow management between fiscal years. So, we would, we're, we've reduced the Prosper Portland's Cannabis Fund resource. And we, the, the, the logic behind that was that they have the largest resource. I believe it's somewhere in the nine to $13 million range. And there was just, it was our understanding that there was no chance that they would spend all of it in the current year, so they could absorb a short-term cut without interrupting services and then be made whole in the next year. And then, beyond that, when we hear the fall bump hearing next Wednesday, there is another ordinance attached to it that updates the fund statement of purpose for the Cannabis Fund and establishes a 10% reserve that will be replenished over time and after Prosper is made whole. That is the other kind of, you know, it comes across as a programmatic cut, but it, it isn't. Are there any questions about that?
I would characterize this as a cash management type of issue. We have a need to fund a program. We have a, a program that's funded that'll be carried over until next year, and we'll make them whole into the next year. This way, it avoids having to do like a 5% cut across the board.
With that, that concludes our presentation at this time. But we are around for discussion. I believe there's 40 more minutes booked, but we are here. We can chat about our analysis or anything else.
Well, plus, we know where you live. Thank you. Great presentation. Anything else?
I just want to say, it's my fourth one, and it's refreshing that it lacked the drama of the last three.
Great.
It became a bumpy ride sometimes.
All right, good. I'll just, first of all, thank you to the Budget Office for guiding us through today's work session and to my colleagues for engaging in this discussion. Great, great questions. For the record, the fall supplemental budget ordinance will come to council next Wednesday, October 4th. And it'll come as a non-emergency ordinance due to some council absences. During the second reading on October 11th, due to the time constraint that that will cause, I will motion to add an emergency clause so the council can vote that day, just so people are aware of that. Thank you. Roger?
Thank you.
Thank you.